I'd like to call to order the March 3, City of Statesboro City Council Meeting. On our agenda, we have the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance to be given by Councilman Travis Chance, who has not made it here yet, so...
Mayor, he's snowed in in Iowa.
He's snowed in in Iowa?
Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and he says it's cold.
I would suspect as much. If it weren't cold, well, we all just need to go home.
You use more colorful language, but all I can say here is it's cold.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Moore. So at this point in time, I guess I will give the invocation and then ask everyone to please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Can we bow our heads? Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us all to come and have our opinions heard in a democracy and in a form by which few people in the world have as much freedom as we did. We ask that you convey upon us your wisdom as we make decisions regarding those in this room and those not in this room, and that we do things for the right reasons, and we do things that you would be proud of us. We wish this, and thank you, Heavenly Father, for this beautiful day and the belter to get together, in God's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, unbroken, in the visible of the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will go to item three on our agenda, which is recognition and public presentations. And before we do that, can I ask who is dressed in red today? Who's joined us?
Eagle Health and Rehabilitation.
Okay. Well, isn't that convenient, because you were first up on the docket. We have a proclamation for Nursing Home Week, and I would ask, Jill, would you come forward, please, and talk to us about Nursing Home Week and what that means to our community, and introduce those that have come with her today.
Thank you. Might I use this corner, please? Thank you, Mayor Moore, for allowing us to participate and for you to provide the proclamation. We're very grateful for that. We represent, long-term care represents 300 community residents in the city of Statesboro, and National Nursing Home Week is something that we celebrate, so we want the community to join in with the long-term care residents. So today, we're very grateful to you for allowing us to have this opportunity, so we can utilize these proclamations throughout the change, what the lines, what we change, to have a wonderful week. This year, the theme is bring only Fiesta. After the Fiesta, we will probably be a Cieza.[187.12][187.12](Laughter). We have brought these to allow you to please join in our celebration. If you would please take one and pass them around for me, and we'd like to give you this invitation for our week. Today, we have Eagle Health and Rehabilitation. Will you please stand up? We are a 99-bed facility. We have a ventilator unit, which is the only ventilator unit, and these are the team members from Eagle Health and Rehabilitation. You want to introduce yourselves real quick?
I'm Christine Ross, Lady Aunt's Ambulance Director.
I'm Rashad Mead, Children's Police Service Manager.
I'm Helen Dern, Activity Director at Metro Records.
I'm Jerry Dayton. I am RAI Coordinator and Restorative Supervisor.
I'm Daniel Financial Control.
I'm Daniel Ray, My House Security Director.
I'm Brittany McKee, I'm the Clinical Care Coordinator.
Angela Wells, Resident Care Coordinator.
Rashad Mead, Medical Nursing.
Betty Mason, Human Resource Director.
And I'm Jerry McCallum, Maintenance Director.
We thank you. Joining us also today, we have Heritage Inn, which is another long-term care facility. If you'll introduce yourselves.
I'm Gina Bellen, Maintenance Director.
I'm Ryan Robbins, Leadership.
I have you with me.
We have Brown's Healthcare. Bear not here today, and Amy? There you are. Would you please stand up quickly?
Good morning. Amy Rogers, I'm the Administrator of Westwood Nursing Center.
Thank you. And we have more of Eagle Health and Rehabilitation coming in. If we can have the administrators, can they come up and photo op to there if you're allowed?
Come on up and we'll read the population real quick.
(Inaudible).
No.[306.62][306.62](Laughter). Let's just go back. Y'all come on around this way. Whereas, interested in understanding of the long-term care delivery system has become increasingly important due to the growing number of elderly and disabled Americans, whereas long-term care providers are dedicated to providing quality care and education to citizens in their communities about the quality of long-term care services available, whereas the reform of America's healthcare system is a major concern for nursing facility residents, their families and staff, and the American public in general, whereas the American Healthcare Association and the Georgia Healthcare Association proudly sponsor National Nursing Home Week 2015 and invite the citizens of Bullock County to visit nursing facilities to benefit from the knowledge and the experience of their residents, family members, volunteers, and staff. RJ and Moore do proclaim the week of May 10 through 16, 2015, as Nursing Home Week. In this community, and urge all citizens to support quality of life in nursing facilities by visiting the residents of these facilities and by learning more about long-term care in this community and across the nation. Thank you very much.[386.21][386.21](Applause).
(Inaudible).
Absolutely.
No, no, we stand up. Everybody, nursing home that's here today, please come up.
She's got a wine in the wind.
And she's my activity director. Get our favorite police officer to take the picture. He has to come and see me all the time, unfortunately.
Are y'all rowdy?
No![412.11][412.11](Laughter).
That's what I'm saying.
And there's Lanny here. Lanny's one of my family members.
What, what, I just spilled it.[421.33][421.33](Laughter). Y'all get the long bag, we'll come this way, and just have yourself.
(Inaudible). Can y'all, can you get us? Y'all want to come and sit in the front, understand? Come on, Marty. Come on, Marty. Two else can do it. RJ, come on.
Come on, RJ. All right, everybody ready? Here we go.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible).
All right, can I ask Angie, Angie, come up quick, ma'am? Is Angie here?
Angie's quick there.
I know that you wanted to briefly speak about hospice.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we do service this area. We service 24 counties and Spanish-American hospitals, and we actually fund us all these programs that are represented here today, and we get to go into all of these different facilities that are in the 24 counties that we service. And we are just very thankful that Bullock County allows us to come into this county to service their people. And so many times, we go in and see that these long-term care facilities have been forgotten, and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity that you have given these facilities today and this proclamation that it's on for.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I do want to... Oh, he's in the back. Okay. Can I ask Mr. Allen Burns to come forward, please? Mr. Burns is the Executive Director of the Coastal Regional Commission, of which Statesboro, the City of Statesboro is a member, and I think Mr. Burns is here today to discuss the recent, for lack of a better term, rate hike?
Yes.
That was voted upon at your last meeting, I believe?
Yes, ma'am.
And to talk about that, so thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate y'all having me here today. It's always a pleasure to come see you, even though I don't always come with good news. Just a minute on myself. I'm a Georgia Southern graduate. I graduated here when it was college, not a university. I've worked a good bit of my time in local government, 28 years in South Carolina, and now seven years here. The Coastal Regional Commission, y'all are one of 35 municipalities that are in 10 counties that we serve in the coastal region. I have a 39-member board that I work for, of which Mayor Moore serves, representing the city. Walter Gibson represents Bullock County. We have one vacant position, which is a private sector position, which I will advertise, please. I'd love for the city and county to get together and appoint someone jointly for that. And then finally, you have Charles Wilson, who serves as an appointment by the governor that also represents your region. We meet monthly, we meet in Richmond Hill, and you're welcome to any of our meetings. The dues issue, we have been talking for about two years about dues. We had, I'd met with Robert just a couple of weeks ago, and we had a good discussion about it, and he asked me to come and talk to y'all. Currently, our per capita dues are required by the state at $1 per capita. You have a little over 28,000 people as of the 2010 census that live inside the city, so your dues are based upon that. Now, we keep that, and each time they are updated, based on the current census. So it'll be about seven more years before the new census comes into effect. But last month, our board voted for a 30-cent increase per capita across the board. That is to be effective April 1 of this year, and predominantly, that is a result of our auditor requesting that the board build up their reserve. We operate primarily with federal and state funds. It's about 70% federal, 25% state, and about 5% are local dollars. So based upon that, we get a lot of bang for the buck. We use the local dollars to match federal dollars to come in primarily. That's our primary function. This, as I mentioned, has been discussed for a couple of years. We have been to the Budget and Finance Committee, which is made up of 11 members throughout the region. They had, we've had four meetings on that, and they ended up voting to support the 30-cent increase, and the full board voted almost unanimously at their last meeting to support that. Our current budget's about $14 million. This will, this increase will add a little over $2,000 to your dues for the current fiscal year through June 30. Next year, your dues based upon this would be $36,949. Now, Robert had asked me, and a very good question, what do we get for that? And I think that's a great question. Couple of things that I wanted to go through, our largest programs are aging services and transportation. Aging services, and I was glad to see this group here, we fund the senior center that's operated here. We do Meals on Wheels, we fund that. We do home care. We operate a call center. All in all, direct dollars to the city and county are a little over $600,000 a year that go into those programs. The contract that serves you is with the county. The county actually puts more money in to that than what we put in with your dues. This is one of the things that has been, we've been hit with in aging, is the state has expanded our duties in that to include anyone with disabilities. We previously, under the Aging Act, were required to work with anybody of any income over the age 55. That has been expanded to anyone who has any disability, and there were no additional dollars came with that, but we are required regardless to assist everyone we can. So we are operating that basically as tight as we can. We have a waiting list in every single county in the region. About 2,600 people region-wide that are waiting currently for services. We operate a transit program, and you've seen our little white buses around town. We operate, last year, we did about 25,000 trips in Bullock County. Majority of those are either going through or designated in Statesboro. We transported another 700, 800 people last year from outside of your county into Statesboro. They're primarily coming here for dialysis, healthcare, education, employment, shopping, those are the big ones. Dialysis and healthcare are the number ones across the board, and they are coming in, and there is money being spent here in Statesboro as a result of that. Now, we have looked hard at that, that program. We got hit very hard the last couple of years because fuel prices, and we had, fuel prices went up significantly, and that's part of the problem we're having budget-wise right now, is that there was no additional money. As a result of that, we've cut staff significantly, and we actually had a lot of discussion in the board about actually cutting the service altogether. The decision was made by the full board to keep doing transit, and we do plan to keep doing that for the foreseeable future. Two other programs that we do that are a little bit smaller, planning is required by the state. We're given very minimal funds, about $190,000 a year, of which we have to use for developments for regional impact. We do in this area, basically, it's an information sharing process. We work with the census, we work with a regional plan, which is required by the state, and then we do a few other things that are out there. One of the things, we're working to try to get the entire state coordinated on GIS data. That's a very difficult project, and we're working with several partners throughout the state. And one of the things that we did that is a significant benefit to the region, that we did at, basically, by putting together partners, was a program called LiDAR, and we developed LiDAR data from the entire region, and that's basically a sonar topo map of the entire region. We are the first region in the state to do that, and we're very proud of that. The funding that we get from the state does not cover what we're required to do by the state, so we have to put local dues into that. Economic development, we have people that work on that throughout the region. We work primarily with the economic development offices region-wide. We also do grants, and we're available at no cost to write any grant that you want. Please just talk to us, and we had a good discussion about that a couple of weeks ago. A couple of things that we're working on, just so you're aware of, that don't have a direct impact, but have a regional impact that would impact you, is base protection. We've got a BRAC coming up again. We have three military installations that have over 70,000 jobs between Fort Stewart, Hunter, and Kings Bay. Would have a significant impact for a major reduction in any of those. We're working on the port dredging. Matter of fact, our next meeting, we're going to be talking about the Savannah Harbor Expansion Project. We've been working with, there is a fuel pipeline that is proposed to come through our region, will not come through Statesboro, but will come through Bullock County, and we are working with the companies and all of the parties involved on that, and we'll be discussing that some at our next meeting as well. And then we're working on a little project down in Camden County that'll have an impact region-wide, the potential of a spaceport, and we're kind of excited about that, and if you hadn't heard about that, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. We work with CADA. CADA actually was formed by our agency, and we still appoint the board, and CADA is our lending institution region-wide and goes out beyond our region. I just touched on a few things that we do, Mayor. It is a member-driven organization, so we do what the membership requires of us to do. We are established by state law, and we do set, our direction is made by the cities and counties of the region. So while you don't see a lot of direct impact from us, it is a regional impact, and it is a little bit difficult to quantify based on your local area, but I can assure you, things like the jobs at the base, or the port expansion, or projects like the T-Sloes project, we feel the impact when they're not there, and those are all ones that we worked on. Open it up for any questions, Mayor, that I can answer at this time?
I do have a question, Allen. You said that the increase was to build reserves?
Yes, ma'am.
Reserving what specifically?
We operate on a reimbursable basis from the state. State does not send us money upfront. We have to spend money, and then we get reimbursed by both state and federal dollars, and we run exceptionally tight on that. One of the problems we've had, and I mentioned the transit program, having problems with that, we have run a deficit in that for two years, and we think we have that under control. We've cut our staff in half, and we've cut some of our buses in the program, but that did have an impact on our operating reserve, and just like the city, you pay the bills, and then you get reimbursed by the taxpayers annually.
So the overall increase, the 30% increase of costs of all counties and cities results in how much additional revenue to you every year?
About $200,000. And we're anticipating that that will take us five years to rebuild the reserve back up to where the auditor is requesting we go to, and at which time, we'll be in the next census, the 2020 census, and I've already told members of the board that what I would like to do when we hit that threshold is reassess that at that point, because we know our population's going up, and I personally would like to take that back down to the mandated dollar.
Okay. So with that, are you anticipating no further deficits in that transportation program over the next several years, based on how you currently are contracted, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. We are anticipating that. Now, if gas spikes back up close to $4 a gallon again, then I don't know if I can promise that, but yes, we're trying to keep everything in line, and part of what we're doing with the transit program is we're doing a partial privatization with that to try to cut our costs some more, and basically allowing a private vendor a little more free rein to do some trips that we can't do as a public entity.
Allen, if I remember right from the board meeting, you also mentioned that it actually would be a lot more money to get out of that program, the transportation program, so that was the thought, to stay in it and see if you couldn't get it to at least break even?
Thank you, Robert. I had, and we put forth three proposals to them, and one was to truly eliminate the program, and the problem is, once you get into that program with the federal government, they make it a little bit difficult to get out, and to basically fund getting out of that was a lot more expensive than 30 cents.
Okay. How much more expensive?
It went to $2 per capita.
Over five years?
Over five years, and it's...
To get out of it?
Just to get out of it.
At what point, and can that be reevaluated in five years to continue participation without penalty?
I think we're going to reevaluate that every year on where we stand with transit. From talking with members of the board, majority of the board supports it 100%. We do have a few members who do not like transit, don't think we should be in the business, and so we'll continue, we evaluate it every year. And the problem is, you've got to fully depreciate everything you've got in the system before you can shut down, and it's very difficult to do.
Is underutilization a problem in that transportation? I see those vans sitting over in that lot, not a lot.
They are, and a lot of those are coming from other counties, and in a lot of cases, they have to wait to pull those people back. We bring, majority of the trips out of Scraven County are basically here and back, and there are no alternative trips in the county or city here that they can transport with, but some of those, we are, we have cut back hours on some of the buses as a cost-saving measure. So you're going to see a few parked, and we have cut our fleet. We were at 83, we're down to 68 now.
Did y'all, the Nursing Home Books, did you guys know there was a Coastal Regional van that drives around here? Are you aware of that program?
I would like for you, we have to say that I would like for the mayor and the council to know that it is a continuous struggle throughout our industry to get people to places. We, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, is almost impossible because everybody's looking at dialysis. We can't get people to the hospital, we're always got to give a three-day notice. There is a definite need for additional transportation.
So when you say you have to give a three-day notice, y'all aren't transporting them, you're asking somebody else to transport them?
That's correct.
And who would that be that you're asking?
Currently, we use a company called Excelsior Ambulances, and that is Ambulance Capital City out of Augusta. It's a constant struggle.
But now, they're equipped to transport medically, you know, not just straight-up public transportation?
Right, but we use Coastal as well for dialysis tests, and it's a struggle to get the people transferred, to work the dialysis everywhere. There's not enough help to transfer.
And I hear comments, we've got two or three, you know, like senior living, it's not assisted living like this, or rehab, but senior living, and they're always looking for, you know, rides. So I think it's not a need problem, I think it's a putting the customers with the resources problem.
And it's, part of it is the way the federal and state government fund this. I mean, it's funded at a 50% level on transit, so it is, it's very difficult to break even. We require, and here, Bullock County invests in it, they put in a fair amount of money to that program above and beyond their dues, and each of the counties do that. We don't ask the municipalities to contribute toward it, but they, and we're still struggling, and when gas prices get up, it, we can't make ends meet.
I just want to say, I actually work with Excelsior Ambulances prior to my job here with hospice, and it is an ongoing problem, and let me say that, our governmental system is what she's talking about, the three-day notice. If a patient has to go to the doctor, they have to give a three-day notice to what they call logisticare, which is like an operating system, and logisticare divvies out to different contracted ambulance services as to whom will take this patient, and they are so overloaded with logisticare patients, Medicare pays for that. Medicare will pay for, like, a dialysis patient to ride in an ambulance if they qualify for some type of health intervention, but they won't pay for them to go to the doctor. So these people who ride with ambulances from Medicare to dialysis do not have a way to the doctor that will be paid, because Medicare will not pay for them to ride by ambulance to the doctor. So that sends a lot of people who really, who really are not qualified to just ride on a van, they really need an ambulance, but they have to go by van because they won't have a way otherwise. And these transits, they're everywhere because, you know, Excelsior Ambulance covers a lot of area, and I see Coastal Regional Vans everywhere, and yes, they are sitting, but they're having to wait because these dialysis people may be supposed to get off in four hours, but they may crash and may have to sit there for another hour and wait on them. So it's hard to legitimately get all of that, you know, it's a big struggle, and these on a van, they really need an ambulance, but they have to go by van because they won't have a way otherwise. And these transits, they're everywhere because, you know, Excelsior Ambulance covers a lot of area, and I see coastal regional vans everywhere, and yes, they are sitting, but they're having to wait, because these dialysis people may be supposed to get off in four hours, but they may crash, and they have to sit there for another hour and wait on them. So it's hard to logistically get all of that, you know. It's a big struggle, and these people, you know, I get, when I was with Excelsior, I get calls from these people saying, where's our ambulance? Well, they're waiting on someone who's crashing dialysis.
And logisticare, and they do what's called non-emergency transportation, we're not allowed to do that. That's a different set of funds. We have bid on that, but we have not been successful.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Thanks, Alan.
Thank y'all.
You know, I was going to tell, Miss Lucky, y'all probably want to go.
Thank you.
Is there anybody there right now? It's a free-for-all. We have a center, are the police being called over there right now?
They're all wearing some...
Margarita machines going? Oh, it's completely all over again.
Might be more patients than there.
Yeah, there might be more people trying to get in. Okay. All right, so we will, I don't think, Ms. Sue, we don't have any more presentations at this time, so the wrestling team did not come, I see, so I guess the message didn't work. Do we have anybody that's asked to make a public comment, Ms. Sue? Okay, so agenda item five is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll ask council to please review that and have somebody make a motion.
May the motion be approved, the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item six is public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application RZ 14-1103. At this time, I'd like to ask council for a motion to open up the public hearing, please.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we will now open up the public hearing. I'm going to ask Mandy to please set the stage for this public hearing, and then we'll ask for those in favor and against. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is a rezon request that we received a couple months ago for a 0.38 property, 38, 0.38 acres of property, excuse me, located at 101 Hawthorne Road. This property, it's very difficult to see, it's shielded by red tips. Many of you may know it is the corner property off of Fair Road as you turn onto Hawthorne Drive. It is currently zoned R20, single-family residential, and the rezon request is to zonify property to office, for use as an office. We have analyzed this request through the development team, as well as through our staff support, and met with the applications representatives a number of times, and also taken the request planning commission. The number-one concern from the staff level regarding this particular rezon request is whether or not this rezoning would, if this property were rezoned, it would constitute an act of spot zoning, which is generally frowned upon for a number of both legal and planning reasons. This property on the side of Hawthorne Drive, the property is located, and you can see this on your map, it's on your screen and also your packet, is surrounded by R20, single-family residential zoning and uses, in some cases, are the uses and our zones don't match, in this particular case, they do. Hawthorne Road seems to be the dividing line between the zoning districts, because you can see this property is on the R20 side, across from Hawthorne Road is R4, which is high-density residential. Across Fair Road, there are properties mostly zoned commercial retail, and one office zone across Fair Road from this location is actually the hospital. Generally, when a property is spot zoned, it is to allow for a higher level of use, mostly for the benefit of that particular property rather than a public benefit, and it's creating an island of that particular use zone, you know, being surrounded by the lower intensity uses. If however, if this council works fine that the property was in transition, or that the projected future use and need of the property based on our land use plans and other considerations were changing and had changed from the time of the original zoning, then that would lift the question of spot zoning, and you can make that rezon more freely and relieve many of the planning and legal concerns that would be raised. I find no history on this particular piece of property of when it was zoned R20, which just leads me to conclude that that is an original zoning designation, probably from the late 70s. We took this particular request, and the spot zoning issue, and the council that if the decision were made that this property were transitioning and needed the office zoning, and this was just the first property to make that zone transition based on either current or projected needs, and those needs no longer reflecting the zoning scheme on the map, that this would not raise the issue of spot zoning to planning commission. And the planning commission, on January the 14th, considered this, spoke with the applicants represented, and did not wish to recommend a rezon. They however did not want to turn the property down completely. They were open to the use of the property as an office, as being requested by the property owner, this is not a tenant making this request, but the actual property owner. And so planning commission's recommendation was to award a special exception with conditions that the staff had offered up, to mitigate any uses that an office, mitigate any harm that the office use could pose to the surrounding residential zones and uses. The applicant at that time was agreeable to a special exception. The special exception does not run with the property, it is a personal to the applicant, which in this case is the property owner. We do file that in our zoning records, and a business license can only issue to this particular applicant and its particular tenants. If this were to change, or the property were to change, any further reviews would have to come back before this body. We have granted some special exceptions, we have denied others, really has, in my opinion, has taken on. Our review of the context and the surroundings of the property, viewed in light of what the request was, and some have been found to be compatible, and others have not. I'll be happy to go into the conditions that the planning commission have recommended or taken in question that you all may have.
Why don't you go ahead and listen to this?
Okay. Those conditions for a special exception may or is follows. A, to allow the use of the property as a professional office. B, to require a vegetated buffer along the shared block lines, but not along Hawthorne Road and Fair Road. Buffer conditions want to be clarified by the staff and the applicant with a site visit, and we conducted that, I can go into more detail with that at appropriate time. C, to limit parking spaces to maximum of 10 spaces plus the garage that is on the site. And D, the property should not be subject to signage as your free regulations, rather signage shall be limited to no more than one monument-style sign, no greater than 5x6 in size, brick and material. Signage is limited to Fair Road frontage, or maybe at the corner of Fair Road and Hawthorne Road, if approved from line of sight by the city staff. Wall signage is limited to a 2x2 placard at the entrance to the building.
So you're saying that this is, you don't consider this to be spot zoning because of what's across the street, not what's on the same side of the street?
No, ma'am, let me rephrase that. We raised the question for you all to make the determination of whether or not this would be spot zoning. On the face of the map, it certainly raises the question, because it would be the only office zone on that side of Fair Road, and would be completely surrounded on that side by R4 and R20, primarily by R20. The only way, you all need to make a finding in your review of this case on whether that area, the subject site area, is transitioning or has transitioned from the needs that this zoning map reflects. And if it's transitioning out of this, then that would support a rezon. If it is not transitioning, and the R20 reflects both the current and projected needs for the city, then we should not rezon because it would.
Can a single lot be transitioning, or is it more an area, character area, if that makes sense?
It's really the surrounding area. There always has to be a first to make that transition.
I understand that, but I mean, you could argue that Zeta Hour Road, for example, you know, it's developing, and you can see it developing. You don't see anybody else along this particular stretch looking to convert to office.
That's right. And at the same time, giving you some help with that, at the same time we reviewed this particular case at planning commission, we reviewed the east-grade rezon that you all considered at the last meeting, and that was asking to go from a single-family residential to a multifamily residential zone. And even though it had some surroundings of single-family, it already had professional offices around it, it already had duplexes around it, that area we could say very comfortably was transitioning out of a single-family area, and we were having more and more requests to develop outside a single-family residence in that particular area. This one, council, as you're alluding to, seems to be a single request in this immediate area. So unless we think we're going to continue to have more requests, then this could, the granting of this application could raise the spot zoning issue.
Could I have, I guess, Mr. Parker, would you like to come up and speak? Or Mr. Dotson for the request, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Dotson, representing Brayson Development this morning. As Mandy alluded to, the original request was for a rezon, and after a great deal of discussion between Mr. Parker and Mr. Probst and the planning department, the request was changed to ask for a special exception to allow for this piece of property to be used as an office. You know, over the last 10 to 15 years, that whole area has changed dramatically. Along the same side, this side of the road has been residential, but across the road went from an agricultural field to an office park, to a hospital, to a grocery store, so it's definitely changed. Also, with the recent installation of the traffic signal at Hawthorne and 67, it's also created an area that, well, I can just speak personally about on that piece of property. I would not want to raise a family at that particular house because of the traffic on that intersection now with the installation of the traffic signal. The request is to renovate the office, alter it as an office that would be, for instance, a small medical office, or an insurance company, or something along those lines. It is not to intrude upon the area. I think currently, this building and the surrounding uses are for rental. The majority of them would be to college students. So even though it is zoned R20, it is not being quote-quote utilized for R20. So the Parkers would like to do this, they do not want to do anything that would detract from this area, they would want to improve it. So with that being said, we would ask for your supporting this. And as Ms. Cody mentioned, I did meet with Cindy Clinton on the site to look at the area, and is what she was asking for, for a vegetated buffer. On the right-hand side, looking at the house, there is an existing fence between this property and the adjoining. So whether we need a vegetated buffer along there or not, same thing along the back. If one is required, I'm sure they could, and they would gladly do so, but if they could be allowed to start the renovation of the property, and as the need arises, either through the city's inspections of it, or from the adjacent property on, then we would ask to maybe add a vegetated buffer at that time. She alluded to the red tips that are along 67 and along Hawthorne Road would be removed, and that would be the location of the sign that you see as one of the conditions. So with that being said, thank you for your support.
Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Dotson before I ask if anybody's supposed?
Is that it? I mean, subsection B says buffer conditions to be clarified by staff and have to go on the site visit, present to council. Was that the presenting of the buffer?
Yes, when Cindy and I were on the site, that's what we discussed, was Mr. Parker could not be there at that time, and I consulted him by phone, and he said, if that's what we need to do, that's fine. We'd be glad to.
And what exactly were those buffer conditions? You know, does it seem on both sides of the property that have neighbors, not the two street sides, but the two neighbor sides?
That's correct. As I said, on the right-hand side, on the east side, there's an existing fence that goes from the back of the lot up to the corner of the adjoining house. So you already have a buffer there with that fence. Now, one needs to be placed from the corner fence out to Hawthorne Road. Yes, ma'am, we could gladly do that. I don't know if we actually need that, or, you know, if that's part of the recommendations from City Council, then we'll be glad to do that. Or if there's something we can discuss in the future, or as the need arises with city staff, we'll be glad to.
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
10 parking spots is a lot of parking spots.
That would be the very maximum. As it is now, we have room for three cars, there are two on the parking pad that backs out down the garage. Would they need four spaces? Would they need six spaces? Would they need eight spaces? As the need arises, there is room on the front of it, between the house and Hawthorne Road, to get 10 parking spaces. Would they put that many in? The future would only tell.
So the way it would read now is all parking would be in front?
Yes, ma'am, there's not room behind the house for parking.
So that would potentially be 10 cars parked in front of the building on Hawthorne, potentially?
Potentially, yes.
Well, and let's face it, those lots too, whatever, I can't remember the numbers, Lot 110, 107, and really 109 to a certain extent, those red, what you call red tips, that's the vegetated buffer that exists right now, and you're going to cut those all down, right?
Those are along Hawthorne and along 67.
That's right, but, you know, that's a, I don't know, 15 VI, 18 VI, that's a vegetated buffer even when you're one lot back.
That's correct.
So taking those out would suddenly expose the backyard of those properties to the Fair Roads.
The two lots that are to the north of this...
There's a site...
Yes, the two lots to the north at one time had, there's been tips along the front of those, but yes, they have been removed. And this would be along the same lines that those two existing buildings are. Yes, sir, but you would see, definitely see them from the road. Now, you can't really tell who's a building there.
Right.
I guess one of the concerns, and I know that Councilman Brett has said this about every time we have a rezon come up, is parking in the front. And so now what we're talking about is rezoning within a residential area and creating 10 parking spaces in front of an office that would be on the front of the property?
Yes, ma'am.
When I think as council, that's pretty much been a concern, or a big concern. Yeah, I guess my question is, if we're looking at a special exception, and I think, what I've heard council say, I'd be interested in the council's opinion on this, is to make something better. And one of the big issues is in, you know, parking in front of either residential or in front of commercial. You know, just the parking being an issue, John, is what I'm saying.
I understand.
And so we're talking about a special exception.
Well, and you can have trees to put in parking.
Yeah, but we're talking about a special exception here to, you know, A, would it make what's there better? I don't know. That's to be discussed. And B, you know, we're talking about putting 10 parking spaces in front of a building in a residential area. So I'm just, I'd like to kind of hear what council thinks about that, just based on what I hear you guys say, meeting in and meeting out, so.
Robert, is this still part of the Parkway?
When you say Parkway?
There's a, I can't remember, I mean, dual Parkway, isn't that correct? Isn't that Fair Road designated?
That is, it is. We do the Parkway, yes.
That's correct.
Where does that end? It is from the bypass to...
El Sombrero, basically where it comes in, El Sombrero.
And I mean, you know, whoever designated that, you know, it was a smart, long-term move, because it's a part of what makes a Parkway a Parkway, trees and greenery and not a parking lot and parking spaces. I mean, it isn't supposed to become a little less, you know, it's not a danger state, it's a Parkway. Isn't that, I don't know if it's my coastal regional...
Wait, you guys have a designation?
I mean, I don't know.
I don't know.
There's a designation, there's a designation.
You have that name, you got to bring it up?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know.
They're probably a sure weight, and I got to act better.
That's correct.
I guess my concern, with spot zones, one or two things, and unless I'm, I think, is it behind old DQ still spot-zoned commercial in a residential area?
I don't know.
About across the street from Lincoln Franklin's building, there's three houses. I think there's still a spot zone, and it never been. So I'm not a big, spot zoning, I think, is usually fine. If we're going to, I think if council wants to start at, I guess, now that we've already determined not to go to the parks, if we go a little bit down to the park, and we're going to zone all of that all the way to the bypass, I think that's the one, move is a reason. If it's not the move to rezon it, then we'll spot it. I think, and if we want to rezon it, and we want all that to come off, I think that's the decision that at some point we'd all back. We spot zone the first one, we are saying the next one can be... We spot zoned the first one, we are saying the next one can be, can be that. I think if not, Alvin would look at us and go, hey, man, y'all just did the one next door.
I think the way around that, though, is our, the attempt to get around that, which I don't know if it actually gets around it, this is what I was going to ask Alvin, and I appreciate you making that point, was a special exception. Does that then, when you special exception, get away a little bit from what would be just a straight-up spot zone? And I don't know the answer to that, Alvin.
Well, the special exception doesn't also rely on it being a transitional piece of property, and I'm not sure this is necessarily a transitional section of Fair Road.
A transitional question is not really raised in a special exception. A special exception is really a use that is not allowed by law within the zoning district, but that this body would find to be compatible to the surrounding uses and, and those that are allowed by law within the zoning district, and that can be made further compatible by conditions that would be imposed on the use that would really assimilate that use into the surrounding areas that in, in theory, you wouldn't, I mean, the surrounding area wouldn't feel the impact of that use, wouldn't really notice that use, and it can fit very nicely into it even though it's not contemplated and allowed for in the zoning.
Well, I would, I would think too, when you rip out all the trees, you put in ten parking, up to ten parking spaces on that property, it's, no longer looks like a house. I mean, and you're saying a special exception, it's kind of like, all right, take the existing building and property and use it like that, but maybe you can bring your bakery outfit or whatever the case may be. But to knock all the trees down and put a parking lot, that's not a house anymore. That's an office space. So wouldn't that then be out of character if it's still a residential property?
The, the objective behind the special exception is really to make sure that the use that's allowed, even though it's not allowed by the ordinance, it would be allowed in such a way that it cannot have a negative impact on the surrounding area, almost to be unnoticed.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Dotson before I ask if someone would like to speak against? Don't go anywhere. I'm sure that's not the point. Is anybody here to speak against this application? Okay. Do I have any further questions from the council? Do I have anybody that would, in addition, like to speak for this applicant?
I'll be just make one brief statement.
Absolutely, come on, please. And for yourself?
My name is Jason Parker. I'm, and my brother Brandon hold the property. And like I said, if we were just basically looking at this as just a potential, long-term best use of, of our value of the property, and it was, the way I understand this spot zoning, not spot zoning, special exemption, it stays with the owner, does not trend, if we were to sell the property, it does not go. So all we want to do is maintain integrity of the neighborhood and not cause any differences or any negative impact. And whatever your request may be, I mean, abide by it. So just, just open discussion, just to look at it and see what could be done, if, if anything, is where this started at, but.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Parker?
I, I guess I just, I'd like to say I appreciate you coming forward and asking, having the manner you've asked. I just love people asking the manner that basically told us that was their God-given right to build whatever they wanted to in their property, and you came up and just what you said is a lot cool, just to say, anyhow, we just came in to look and see what we can do. I, I just, I appreciate that.
Right. Yeah, that's all we were looking for, just looking at it and see. And like I said, the, the red tip, like you said, Mr. Parker, like I said, at any time they could potentially, because you know, like they, Mr. Dotson said, at one time there were red tips all along that area, and sometimes something, I mean, they could have to come down no matter what if it even stayed residential, you know what I'm saying? Just to open it up and maybe eventually get airspace into that potential place. But anyway, that's yet to be determined or anything there. But anyway, that's just a, and like, as you can tell, it just blocks the whole house. I mean, you can't see that particular house.
I think the red tips.
I think that was kind of the point, though.
Well, if you give it a buffer between that and right, right?
I think those are the second red tips.
Yeah, that's a good place, yeah.
I'm forty, I think that's the second.
Thank you for pointing out that.
It's because you live nearer.
No, but I don't think that, what's the implication?
That was important. But I think they already, in my lifetime, they've, they've cut down warrants.
They've been cut down, dug up, replanted, dug up. You know, red tips have a lot of span.
Yeah. Anyway, just thank you for the consideration.
Where are you looking to put them?
Just, we're right, right now, it's just rental property, and we just want to open it up and have an office. No, an office, just like what you, Dotson said, just potentially, it's a, some type of office, to utilize it as a potential office and utilize the traffic that's coming through it or at that red light and right there.
And you'd leave the building the same as it is, we took our garage, the, the driveway?
Yes, to my knowledge, he's got it on the draw, like, drawn out there with the plan.
And we could all wait.
Yeah, we just may have to, like, reroute the, you know, just, you know, just way and shape and deep our down.
And then put, uh, uh, can you show me what we're doing, ten parking spaces we're doing, through the driveway?
I think that's.
Right in front of the house?
Yeah.
No other place to go outside, anything?
Because you can't.
Yeah, because behind it, it's.
Right.
Thank you for your day.
All right. Any, any other questions before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Do I have a motion to, from council to close the public hearing regarding application RZ fourteen eleven oh three?
So?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Close, public hearing closed. Now, do I have consideration of a motion to approve application RZ fourteen eleven dash oh three?
Mayor, I guess before you, for a motion, at some point, I don't really know how we would go about it, I think it's, we talked about it briefly about Kwanah, and now this is the second one on this fair road, and Mandy kind of directed us, I think at some point, council needs to look at the maps again, and, and you need to ask us, guys, are you all willing to do this? Y'all want to change X, Y, and Z? And that way, Dotson knows, Joe and Max will know off the bat. I, I think we all have an opinion of fair road, because we've backed it with some stuff, but also we have some communications between each other that said, had the Vincents brought us this idea, maybe we would have been okay with it. I think that's something that if, if, if we're willing to do office, I think we need to consider rezoning in, in strips, not in lots.
I think we began that exercise, Councilman, when we looked at the future land use map of the update and comp plan, and several of you spent a lot of time marking up particular areas in the city and in particular districts that you had saw some changes in, or maybe you saw where the, the previous land use map weren't really reflecting the current conditions on the ground, so to speak. So I think we really began that process of that. But we can certainly look at a more site-specific rezoning if that's something that we can do. We can do that in a work session.
I was going to say that would probably need to be done in an open work session. And also, like, like Mandy stated, that map has been redrawn since then, so it's probably good to, for the back and review that. And I think we actually, we asked for public input on that.
Yes, ma'am, several of them.
And so, you know, we asked for the public to come in and look and what was just coming on that.
We just redesignated that too. What was the, what was the redesignation?
In, in that particular area, we, which we began this case consideration off air to the applicant, we began this case processing over the two thousand and nine map. Since we began that, we, we've transitioned over to the two thousand and fourteen map. If memory serves, under the two thousand and nine, this is along an activity corridor across from what's considered that developing area because in proximity to that market district area, which is really considered to be commercial and developing. This side of Fair Road, subject site line of one, we kept to be residential.
So on that future map, it stayed residential, isn't it?
If, if memory serves, yes, ma'am, it did.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do you have anything else, Councilman Brett, before I ask for a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve application RZ fourteen eleven dash oh three? Okay, I have no motion from council. So I guess, do, do we need to have a motion to deny since we don't have a motion to approve?
Can you be taken to a disposition? No hesitation?
Well, if we don't have a motion, if we don't deny it, then the applicant can't come back.
That's what I want.
So we could just not deny it, we just do not have a motion to approve. If we have a work session go through, then you can come back and apply again. Okay.
Well, Mayor, would it be appropriate for us to have a vote on the special exception? I understand Mr. Dotson said that the applicant has changed his request from the rezonement that was initially filed to the special exception to be granted.
So let me get, let me get straight here. The application, RZ fourteen eleven oh three, is not the special exception?
The, oh, application as filed with our office was for a rezone. It's during, during this process that the special exception conversation started, particularly at planning commission. The applicant, as I understand, has expressed their willingness to accept the special exception, and I think would like to vote, rather than a rezone, if, if, if there's no motion to be made on the rezone, would there be a motion on a special exception to be granted?
And we did not list this as such on the agenda for calls by?
Because the application came to me as a rezone, and it's been processed as such.
But we don't, but we, but our public hearing was about a rezone then, it was not about the special exception.
That's correct.
And then I will stop and, hang on. So should that have been listed differently on the agenda?
That would probably be the cleaner way to do it.
That's exactly my question.
Have a listing, and then bring it back as a special exception, not here as one that.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, we can't vote on one thing that's not what, you see what I'm saying, Mandy? I have a problem with that. I don't think that's a clean way if it's going to be yes or no based on the way it's listed here.
And so the public hearing is required under state law for a rezone, and that was the way the application came in.
I understand.
A special exception hasn't, you all are certainly welcoming for transparency's sake, I don't argue with you, having a public hearing advertised as such for a special exception, but we are within the boundaries of this zoning laws to reach a different decision than the applicant originally requested, particularly when, since the applicant is offering that as a compromised position.
Well, I guess my concern is we may be within the boundaries from the zoning laws, but are we within the boundaries of this council in how we do our job?
And requirement of the local.
That's exactly right. That's my concern, not the zoning laws.
Well, there is no agenda for, there is no meetings requirement for a special permit, is there? Or special exemption?
There is an agenda requirement in the Open Meetings Act that says anything that's going to be addressed by council is listed on the agenda.
So, so we're just acting on what's on the agenda? Special exception, not here.
Special exception is not listed on the agenda because it's not what we received at all.
So this, so at this point, that's why I'm not comfortable asking for a vote on something that's not on the agenda. Okay.
I mean, you can parse the Open Meetings Act a little bit, that's what I'm saying, cleaner way to do it, and a special exception on the agenda to make sure the laws.
Mr. Parker, do you have a problem with that? Thank you. So I would, I would ask that we do not ask for a vote on the special exception today. Okay. So we all clear? We'll put it back on the agenda and vote at the next meeting.
Special exception.
Be a special exception. We, we, we choose not to parse the Open Meetings Act at this time. Thank you. As you can understand, I'm a little sensitive to that particular topic. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker, Mr. Dotson. Moving to Agenda Item Seven, which is administrative hearings for alleged alcohol violations as pursuant to Chapter Six of the City of States for Alcohol Ordinances. And I'm going to have some opening remarks, and then we'll go down our agenda items. We're going to move, just so you know, Agenda Item One, Casey Lynn Scarborough, will be moved to five, to the end of the, will become number five. Now, we will move on to considering whether certain persons or entities that hold an alcoholic beverage license as issued by the city have violated the Chapter Six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of States for Regarding Alcoholic Beverages, and if so, what sanctions are appropriate under the ordinance. These cases have been brought by the Department of Public Safety against several license holders. Before we proceed with those cases, I would like to establish the general procedures these cases will follow. Considering as a quasi-judicial body of the mayor and city council are not sitting as a court of this state as defined in OCGA twenty-four dash one dash two, as such strict compliance for the Georgia rules of evidence as provided for in Chapter Twenty-four of the Official Code of Georgia is not required. Rules on the relevancy and immisibility of evidence and whether to hear argument in all points of order, including who shall address, counsel shall be made by the presiding officer pursuant to the authority granted to presiding officer in Section Two dash two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of States for in light of the purpose and scope of this hearing. The standard of proof for determining whether violations have taken place as a preponderance of the evidence, and determining where the preponderance of evidence lies, counsel may consider all the facts and circumstances of the case, and witnesses' manner of testifying their intelligence, their means and opportunity for knowing the facts to which they testified. The nature of the facts to which they testify, the probability or improbability of their testimony, their interest or want of interest, and their personal credibility so far as the same may legitimately appear from the hearing. Both the Department of Public Safety and the licensee have the right to be represented by the council, the right to present evidence and cross-examine the evidence presented by the opposing party. Finally, both the Department of Public Safety and the licensee enjoy the right to appeal any decision here today to the Superior Court of Bullock County. So I would ask that anybody who will be speaking or giving evidence regarding these administrative hearings, please stand. That's anybody from Wings Over the Borough, Gate Patrollem number two-two-six, Gate Patrollem number two-two-seven, Kevin's Food Mart, and Walgreens, do please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give here today shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Not yet.
Okay, please proceed. We will start with Mr. McCormick and Mr. Hildebrand of Gate Patrollem number two-two-six, please. And we will do them back-to-back, the number two-two-six and number two-two-seven. Please state your names for the record and who you are representing today.
My name is John McMahon. I, I am representing Gate Patrollem.
Okay, and the gentleman behind you?
I'm Jay Oberman, along the license.
Okay.
Mr. McCormick is not here.
Okay. And have you been duly sworn, yes or no?
Yes.
Have you been duly sworn, yes or no? Have you agreed, reached an agreement with the City of States or Department of Public Safety regarding the charge for Gate Patrollem number two-two-six?
We have.
Okay. Do you have that paper, Mr. Brian? Lieutenant Brian, excuse me. Okay. Okay, Mr. Hildebrand, did you sign this paper that I am holding in my hand stipulating that the entity you represent did indeed violate the City of States for Alcohol Ordinances?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation?
May I speak?
Please.
Mayor Moore and council, like I said before, I'm John McMahon of Gate Patrollem Company. I'm Vice President of Marketing, in charge of the Northern Vision, which these two stores are in, and Jay supervises. I stand before you today, of course, I'm number two and three in this section, and I'm here to truly apologize for, for selling that alcohol mine. We, as a company, have procedures in place, policies, procedures in place to reduce this, and we blew it. We made, we, with both these stores, we sold alcohol to mine. We take it very seriously. We have the procedures in place. I have plenty to show you if you'd like to see it. We, we, we understand the seriousness of what we've done. We don't condone it in any way. We, we're very, we try to be very vigilant against this happening. We have steps that are, are taken in all our stores. For a new hire, they have to go through, we have base modules, we have ten modules. One of them concerns alcohol and safety. In this module, they have to get a hundred percent. They take a test in each module, they have to have a hundred percent. All the other modules, they need eighty percent to proceed to the, to the sales associate or to be able to be on the floor. After they take the module, pass the test at a hundred percent, they have to sign off. Number two, we, you know, they sign off after the test. Number three, you know, we have signs, our register, Jay, I'll show them the picture. And we have our module here if you'd like to see it.
I don't know if I have enough, I only have five, I don't know if you want to.
The first part of that should be the web-based training modules. The first part of that should be the web-based training modules. So they initially sign after the module, then when they come to the store, we don't let them, they don't work by themselves for two or three days. They're always with somebody. And after that, at that portion, we have a new hire checklist, which covers a lot of their duties in the store, customer service, and including the alcohol sale. They sign off there again. Our registers, as you see a picture in, in that packet, when alcohol, tobacco, or lottery sale is made, a screen comes up saying, is the age, are they age eligible? Now, at that portion, they're supposed to check the ID, enter the date or scan the date in the register, and it should do the work for them. In the first, in, in the case of Two Two Six, our young lady, Precious, did take the ID, read it, did the math in her head, and blew it. In our other case, the employee did not even look at the ID, so we blew it in both cases. We have an ongoing secret shopping program, monthly, that we run and do ourselves. We hire a company outside, it comes in, checks not only the alcohol, but the store conditions and everything else. We take it very seriously. There's, there's our warnings and the steps we take. If we fail the, the secret shops, if we fail a state staying, we, we think we have the, the policies and procedures in place. We're very serious about it, and again, you know, we, we apologize. Each year, they also have to do the alcohol test again. So it's, it's an ongoing process. You know, we just failed in this instance.
This is just strictly out of curiosity, but one of the things that seems to not maybe be missing when we have people that come up here and, you know, we've had several, consider yourself the company admin.
I'm sorry.
Do, do employees understand, and I don't know the answer to this question, that's why I'm posing it to you. Do they understand that, obviously, there's, it impacts you? But do they realize when they're, when they're ticketed for doing that, that they just broke themselves, they just wrote a seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollar check out of their own account? Do they get that?
It's in here somewhere.
I'm just asking.
They know it.
I mean, do y'all put a sign by the register that says, if you do this, it's going to cost you anywhere from seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars?
We don't have that sign in place. We probably should.
I mean, to me, if it hits their own pocket, that may be a little bit more of a deterrent if they really realize, because what happens is they get ticketed and you fire them.
Right.
And the other employees never realize what the actual impact to that employee is, because they'll come back to work the next day.
Well, having to, it's in the training.
Line eleven there, I mean, they signed, it states that they will.
That's mighty small print.
Okay, I.
And I'll raise this.
Might want to move that up to line number one.
I said, I said, it's, uh, my other job is Dean of Students at Aggie Technical College, and when we, we put big signs up for things as reminders. So, and I'm not being that to be funny.
That's a great idea.
I'm just saying, from a human nature standpoint, it, it tends to work better if there's a constant reminder that they can read, but I can tell you, when they sign that, they sign it to get a job. They didn't sign it to read it and take in what you were, what you were saying. And I, and, and again, I'm not trying to get on your case. I promise, I'm trying to help you out.
But they do, they do have to pass the test one hundred percent, so that they have to know. We hope that, they know they, they took, we know that they took it and passed it. I like your idea about a bear sign and maybe more emphasis on what, not only does it affect us, but it affects them.
I mean, the reason I say that is because I hear a lot, you know, from council about we, we tend to, there may be a perception that there is a, you know, that, excuse me, that was not terminal, that we're punishing the business owner. And I don't, I don't think that they realize that the employees who actually do this suffer a punishment as well, and I don't know that the employees realize it.
Now, that video piece that they take, it tells them they are responsible. It's not just a small print. It tells them that they will be held responsible legally along with us, too. We can not be held responsible for it, too, so they, they are.
I'm sure you told them. I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm sure that's been said. It's just maybe, I'm just suggesting, maybe a sign that says.
I'm all for it.
If you so choose not to card, or you, you know, you're not careful with what you're doing, it could. I mean, I can guarantee you, there's few kids, few students in Statesboro, Georgia, Georgia Southern University, that don't know what a DUI costs them. If you ask any college student, what's it don't cost you if you get a DUI, I guarantee they come up with a number about like that. And folks that are out there working in places, if they need to, they need to have that same number. And I can guarantee you, every student out here will tell you what an MIP costs them. They know. That's just a, just a call.
We'll certainly do that. We, like I say, we think we're vigilant, but obviously, we didn't pass. The majority of our secret shops are passed, but that's not it. And that's done on a monthly basis.
Sounds like you want to do the right thing.
We do. We absolutely do, and, you know, we take responsibility.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch. Is this Statesboro Police Citation or DOR?
This is a State Patrol Police Citation. We're not assaulting her.
These are all State Patrol places, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any further questions or anything they'd like to ask?
Both, both violations were, were for the same license holder, but it's two different stores.
Yes, we have two stores in Statesboro.
I'm thinking, is this a second offense?
Both of them are first offenses.
Two second licenses.
License. First, it's two licenses.
It's two second licenses.
Okay, oh.
And they have pled guilty yet?
Yes.
So do we need a motion to find them guilty?
Well, that's what I'm about to say. If we're done talking, do I have a motion from council finding that we're going to do the personal first gate, Number Two Two Six violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol License Ordinance on January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As this is a first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as regards punishment for the violation?
Motion for a warning. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion from council finding that Gate Patrolling Number Two Two Seven, located at seven hundred Northside Drive East, violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is a first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as regards punishment for this violation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I have Mr. Patel from Kevin's Food Mart come forward, please? Please state your name for the record and who you are representing today.
I'm Patel, and I've been, I've been speaking to Patel since I was here, so I haven't been able to.
Okay, and you have been duly sworn. You stood and raised your right hand.
Yes.
You did. Okay. Have you reached an agreement with the City of Statesboro Department of Public Safety regarding this charge?
Yes.
Okay, can I have that, please, Lieutenant Bryan?
Mayor referenced that back on February eighteenth. I met with Mr. Patel, who, the actual licensee, is in India.
Okay.
I say copy to him. This was delivered back to us on the eighteenth. He has been in contact with the licensee multiple times.
Okay, so based on, based on your testimony, Lieutenant Bryan, and this document I'm holding in my hand, stipulating that that entity did indeed violate the City of Statesboro, was signed appropriately, and obeyed to you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, as per Mr. Patel.
Per Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel, do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation?
Yeah, we are sorry about that, and I like your suggestion. You all employees care, like, you know, it's your cost if you sell the alcohol, the alcohol, you know, and you have to pay the tickets and everything, but we don't put a sign on the register, and we can do that, you know, we can put a sign on, make sure the register, like, you know, seven hundred fifty dollars you have to pay there, and we can train the all employees.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Mr. Patel? Okay. Do I have a motion from council finding that Kevin's Food Mart at four hundred South Zedderire Avenue did indeed violate the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen?
So moved.
Second. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is a first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as regards punishment for the violation?
Motion for a first offense warning.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Lieutenant Bryan? Okay, is Ms. Alicia Riley here? Do we have anybody from Walgreens, representing Walgreens today? Okay?
Madam Mayor, the chief paralegal from Walgreens has been in contact with me. That document was signed by their licensee, who is at their corporate headquarters, and emailed back. That paralegal verified that that was his signature. She had it perfected, and that was their wish to enter that motion. Do not mean, I do not believe Ms. Riley is currently at this store anymore.
Okay, so we do have a motion to enter guilty plea, then, from Representative Walgreens.
Just say the licensee's at their corporate office.
That is correct.
Does the licensee need to be in the county?
You have, you have many business owners that are your licensees that have to live outside of the city.
You're required to have a registered agent of services in the county. You have to pay for the city to violate. He was younger.
Okay, so we have to have some contact, local contact.
That's correct.
Okay. So do I have a motion from council finding that Walgreens, Walgreens Company at five sixteen Northside Drive East violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on January the twenty-second, two thousand fifteen? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is a first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as regards punishment for this violation?
First violation, warning, motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Prior to presenting the violation, Wings Over Borough, Wild Wings, and Casey Lynn Scarborough, I would like to ask for a ten-minute recess of council while I speak with Attorney Levin, our attorney in this courtroom, Lieutenant Bryan.
Eight minutes?
Ten minutes. So it is ten twenty-five. Please, we will come back at ten thirty-five.
I mean, what I just said, I don't think it's.
I say that, I don't.
But having a distance, it's not, it's not where that.
No, they didn't run around the game, to me, this person.
I think.
How's it going, man?
It takes a lot of.
A lot of time, a lot of.
Nice. There's certain value that someone can share. I guess I'm sort of a GMA. Somebody else gets to be really for every six.
That's, that's an issue, you know.
Here's an Alba, here's an Alba, and they appreciate it.
Uh, they come at a different pace. I feel like they have to be. I'm not sure about that, but there's, there's some additional. Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess, no, I think, I don't think they're doing it any. But I don't know what that would, uh, say, if you are.
How do you mean? What took y'all so long to get out of here?
That's a corroborating story.
Get out of this house.
Well, I'll read two. That's good, it's good to check her third. Sunny, ten. And then we turn her to Texas. So she's four.
What is that? That's a, they're like. Let's go back in. What happened is, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues. His facts is very bad. Prevent him from being, prevent him from presenting his case. The reason why, because his books is. Not a solid, no. So, I mean, we drop.
So, I have told that.
Straight.
Wow. Uh, I would like to, uh, call our chairman. Back to order, please, and apologize for, uh, taking a little bit longer than I thought we would take. The reason, just so everybody, to be clear, the reason that I asked for recess is this will, uh, be the first of this type of proceeding that we've had since, um, we began these alcohol administrative hearings back in November. And I wanted to make sure that, that we did it the correct way and that everybody was on the same page before proceeding forward. So that's why we took the recess and met with the concerned parties. Can I have, uh, Mr. Levitt Bennett and Casey Lynn Scarborough step forward, please, representing Wings Over Borough? And both of you all have been in this room, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, at this point, it is my understanding that Ms. Scarborough does not wish to plead guilty at this time uh, to the ordinance violation, and I would ask Mr. Lieutenant Brian to step forward, please. And therefore, we will have a hearing regarding this violation. So, prior to the, I mean, as part of this hearing, there are certain things that you all would like to stipulate to before we begin, is that correct?
That would be a way to speak this up.
Okay, please do so.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Department of Public Safety and Mr. Bennett have agreed to stipulate to the facts as written in the incident report. Um, we will, you know, copy that incident report and place it in record. I believe the argument Mr. Bennett will make will be in reference to, um, the ordinance itself.
Okay.
So, you'd like to question about that stipulation?
Can you, can you just give a brief, uh, to counsel, please, is what's your, what is being stipulated to before we begin with arguments about the ordinance itself?
Um, I think we can. I think on December nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, um, an undercover officer, Miss Greenway, I think working for Georgia Southern University, uh, entered Wild Wing Cafe, uh, was asked by one of the employees there, Taylor Burrows, to exhibit her ID, her federal ID, which she did. Uh, he, um, I think our, our position is that he just read the birth date, the birth year is nineteen ninety-one. The actual birth date, year on the ID should be nineteen ninety-four. Um, and she was served alcohol, a, uh, beer, which she then took to bathroom and poured out. The video is available. It's a little bit blurred, it sort of swayed back and forth. Apparently she added something that was like a verse or something, because of the video camera. Uh, but that's it. In the, in the, uh, matters contained in the incident report, uh, as verified by the videotape, I think, for all of the speakers themselves.
Okay, so stipulating to the fact that Mr. Burrows did sell to Miss Greenway, who was underage and did present an ID with an actual, her actual birthday on it, is that correct?
That's right. That's, that's our understanding.
Okay.
That is correct, on the side of the department.
Okay. So, as we proceed forward, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brian and, and Mr. Bennett, as we go forward with your argument as to why, Wild Wings should not be found in violation, uh, of the alcohol ordinance, would you like to present? Okay, please do so.
And I, and I would say Taylor Burrows, who is the young man who actually made the sale, is a student of Georgia Southern, has a three-point-seven GPA. This is a Zell Mill recipient, scholarship recipient. He is in a test right now, just, uh, I could not quite convince him to come down here and miss the test. Uh, anyhow, Casey Lynn Scarborough is here. She is the license holder of Wild Wing Cafe. Uh, Taylor Burrows is the young man who, who was, who was in the, uh, position of selling alcohol to this, uh, lady, Miss Greenway. First of all, I want to say a couple things. Um, we have read the ordinance very carefully. Um, I, I've told a couple of people this story. My uncle, one time got fined ten dollars for parking on the X around the courthouse. Didn't know that parking on the X was a violation. He went and looked it up, and nowhere in ordinance or nowhere in the state statute did it show parking on the X was a violation of law. So I learned that, but to look at the actual ordinance, in this case, I looked at Chapter Six, uh, which is your alcohol beverage ordinance. Uh, the law as written is, uh, has got some issues, and I'll get to that in a minute. Um, I, I want to first say that, uh, I'm very satisfied and have always been satisfied with the work of the Statesport Police Department. I've worked with, uh, I've actually worked with Patrick Harrelson on cases where clients, uh, did some undercover work and, and he made it very clear to me and to my clients that, uh, that they're not trying to trap anybody, they don't want to trick anybody, they don't want to deceive anybody. It is what it is. So I'm very proud of the fact that we have a, a good police department that, that acts with a great deal of credibility and, um, and a perfect, good approach to the law. Yeah, Wild Wing Cafe is a, is a good corporate owner. They, they involve themselves in a number of civic organizations. They, um, make donations to, to various charities here, and they are good corporate participants, partners for this, for this town. This is the first violation that's been alleged since they opened the doors, April of two thousand fourteen, and I think that's important, and it is a, a fact that this body can consider. Chapter Six, which is your alcohol beverage ordinance, sets forth a number of things. Number one is, uh, section six. Number one is, uh, section six-point-one, six-dash-one. Purposes of the law include compliance with the state law and preventing the sale of alcohol to what they call unfit, which would be underage people. Uh, section six-point-dash-three is the violations. Section subsection A deals with criminal violations. That could be what I think Mr. Boyd referred to earlier, that your, to your, um, employees understand that you can be fined seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that's six-dash-three, subsection A is, it deals with criminal violation. Uh, subsection B deals with civil penalties that can be associated with a violation, assuming that there is a violation in the rest of the ordinance. Section six-dash-thirty-five is the suspension revocation section. That's actually the thou shalt not section here that we're dealing with. And that requires an act or an act, an act of a license C, uh, that could result in the license being suspended or revoked. Interestingly enough, six-dash-thirty-five provides that in order to be suspended or revoked, you have to have a major violation. Doesn't just say a violation, doesn't say any violation. It says a major violation. If you go back to six-dash-two, which is the definitional section, nowhere in the city ordinance does six-dash-two describe a major violation. In fact, it doesn't even describe violation. Uh, so there's a problem there that I think needs to be addressed somehow, either here or perhaps in the Superior Court setting. Obviously, my sense under six-dash-thirty-five saying that it has to be a major violation, that does not necessarily mean that any and every violation has to result in a suspension, revocation. Three-dash-three-dash-two, which is part incorporated into chapter six by reference, requires that a municipality or governing body like yourselves set up ascertainable standards by which license holders, uh, can have their licenses examined, revoked, suspended, taken away. All decisions pertaining to alcohol licenses are governed by that three-dash-three-dash-two. And because there is no definition, there is no ascertainable standard under your ordinance. Uh, a major violation is not defined, and I think you've got some issues to deal with on that. Um, and, and I, and I've been here for thirty-two years, so I know how the ordinance has changed over the years. In fact, in my office, I have one of the old ordinance books, which Uncle Joe Neville told me one time was the only ordinance book in the whole city. It was in his office because he was the city attorney. But over the years, it's sort of grown by leaps and bounds, and things have been added and inserted and put in there. And perhaps it's a time for us to all consider a revision from top to bottom of these ordinances. But assuming that one sale of alcohol to someone who is underage, uh, is a major violation is a little bit of a stretch under your own ordinance. Uh, this young lady who, uh, who was underage, was twenty years and five months at the time, I understand. So she was, she was almost twenty-one. Uh, but this young man, Mr. Burrows, did take the time to look at her ID. And according to his statement, which is attached to this memorandum, uh, he simply made a mistake. Uh, he looked at it, he said, the, the actual license was not in good condition, it was bent, and he made a mistake. He read the nine, nine, five-nine-ninety-four to five-nine-ninety-one. Um, section three-dash-three-dash-twenty-three, which is incorporated into your chapter six, requires two things. Requires a knowingly sale or furnishing of alcohol by either the person or by someone under that person's employ. In this case, either Casey Scarborough would have to make a sale to an underage person, or someone who was hired by her or responsible to her would have to make a knowingly make a sale. And the key, and the word knowingly is set forth in three-dash-three-dash-twenty-three, A-one. And it is incorporated by virtue of the fact that y'all, this chapter six incorporates title three to our, uh, our state statute. And the question here is, is there evidence by preponderance of evidence that's more likely than not that this young man sold alcohol knowingly to an underage person? And I think that's where the problem binds, falls factually or fails factually in this here. Uh, first of all, there's no evidence that Casey sold anything. She's not in incident report, she's on videotape. So that part of, uh, three-dash-three-twenty-three, uh, A-one fails. There's no evidence, um, that Mr. Scarborough willfully or knowingly sold alcohol to an underage person. He has attached a, an affidavit, and so has, or a statement, so has Ms. Garber. Ms. Garber says Wildwing Cafe is mostly a food joint. It has eighty percent sales of food, twenty percent sales of alcohol. Every day, they stress to their employees the necessity of checking IDs. They have what they call alley rallies at the beginning of every shift. During the alley rallies, they have, they remind everybody to constantly check IDs. Uh, they bring that to the attention of the staff every shift. If there's any question about the person's age, they're required to talk to a manager. The acceptable age, which is born after this date, we all see, is posted where everybody who works there can see it. And they're reminded, don't sell alcohol, sell alcohol to anyone born after that date. So Wildwing has a corporate policy that requires their employees very faithfully to look for IDs, look at the IDs, pay attention, make sure that the, uh, that the person is born before the acceptable age posted in the bar. Uh, in the statement made by Taylor Burrows, he said he asked to see the officer's ID. In fact, the incident report indicates that, that, uh, she did, she was asked, the undercover, undercover officer was asked to show her ID. And the videotape shows that she does exhibit her ID to him. Uh, he said that he, she appeared to be of questionable age, so he checked the ID. He said first he checked to make sure that was her and not someone else. And second thing, he checked the date. He said, Miss red, then five-nine-ninety-four is five-nine-ninety-one, and he sold the alcohol. So the next day, the officers came in, showed him a blown-up picture of the ID, and he said, of course, he could see then, it said ninety-four, not ninety-one. Um, and, and it's important that you look also at his resume. I think it's important because one of the questions is going to be, what evidence do you have that he knowingly violated this law? You look at his resume, you can see what a, yeah, what a fine he invented. Has a three-point-seven GPA at Georgia Southern, makes the Dean's List regularly. He's a Zell Miller, uh, scholarship recipient. He's a graduate of Southeast Bullock High School. He was a Governor's Honor recipient in two thousand and ten. Made the honor roll every six weeks all the way through his high school education. He was a Georgia merit recipient. He was a senior captain both his football and baseball team. So we're not talking about some guy who's been in trouble, has got problems. He's a, he's a very nice young man with a great background. Not one who would knowingly violate any law. And that's important in this case. Um, the standard that I think is being asked of you, or might be asked of you, is what's called a strict liability standard. You, under, under various laws, you can have a strict liability standard, such as statutory rape. Doesn't matter if you thought the girl was over sixteen or not. If the person's under that age, you're strictly liable for, uh, violating law. Your ordinance, chapter six, does not have a strict liability standard. It doesn't say, if there is a sale, it is automatically a violation of law. It, it requires a reason, a rule of reason, a re, rule of reason, which is built into our state statute, which has a number of sections, three-dash-three-dash-twenty-three, A through H, L, I think. So there are a number of rules, and those are all built in there so that you do use a rule of reason. Um, last month, Violet lost the ability to sell alcohol, food over there. Today, it's Wildwing. It was gate petroleum earlier today. You know, who's it going to be next? Applebee's, Chili's, Longboard? And the reason I say that is, you, you as a body have to have a system where people who try to do the right thing, try to educate their employees, try to get their employees to do the right thing, are, are given another, uh, a chance to, to make good. And I think the problem we have here is that if we have a strict liability standard, which is not in the ordinance, but if you have that, then you have to sort of ask yourself, what organizations, what companies, what businesses are going to come to town, invest millions of dollars if they know some kid who they have taught over and over and over not to sell underage? Doesn't check or misses something, or makes a mistake. We're all human, we all make mistakes from time to time. This young man says he made a mistake, he looked at the year, made a mistake. Uh, what evidence do we have that he knowingly, knowingly, intentionally violated the law? We don't have any in this case. And I think the, it's something that's incumbent upon the Public Safety Department to show more likely than not, with preponderance of the evidence, that there was a knowing violation. I don't think you've got that. I think also you have the issue with major violation versus any violation. So those are the issues we have, partly legal, partly factual. Um, I've had people say, well, why don't you just, why don't you just take your punishment? Why don't you just take a warrant? And the reason is twofold. One is if you haven't violated the law, you ought not to be held responsible. Secondly, it counts as a strike. Next time we come up here, it may be a three-day suspension like Violet, but it won't. So there's a lot riding on this, and I think it's something that, that this body needs to take a very serious look at. But we, we would ask that you consider the facts, consider there is no correct testimony, evidence, um, that this young man knowingly violated law in favor of Ms. Scarborough. Now, one question has come up about how do we ever prove? How do you, how do you prove ever if somebody looks at an ID and just says that they made a mistake? We have to use, again, the rule of reason. You have to see, does the guy wink, wink, nod, nod at the video camera? Does he flash that and not look? Do you show a person who's three hundred pounds in the photo that the person found out he's a hundred pounds? Use reasonable standards, reasonable objective standards. In this case, using reasonable objective standards, there's no evidence that this person knowingly violated the law.
And, and I, I do have to comment on the wink, wink, nod, nod, Mr. Bennett, because you're, you're dating yourself.
Thank you.
You and I, we don't wink, wink, nod anymore. That, that's, that's, that's old school, and I appreciate that.
Are you saying you would remember the Red Taps, too?
Yeah, sure he would. He probably knows what it was planted. Uh, I want to ask Mr. Bryan to come up and, and, and question. We obviously don't have the young man here who, who actually sold the alcohol, so that does change the dynamic somewhat. Um, I'm going to ask Mr. Bryan, uh, Lieutenant Bryan, excuse me, to respond and ask any questions that he may have of Ms. Scarborough here. And then I'm also going to ask, following that, that, um, City Attorney, uh, Lee Park, kind of lead us along the discussion as it, as it goes with the argument that Mr. Bennett is making. Uh, one thing I would hope that we would do during this, that, that, the purpose of this hearing is determine whether or not there's an alcohol violation, not whether or not businesses will come to Statesboro. So I would hope that we can limit, um, the discussion here as to whether or not there's an alcohol violation. And, and my response to you with that would be, sooner than later, there's going to be software where you can scan all of these things when you go to tables. So I don't think that we're going to have necessarily, um, the, you know, is somebody's vision appropriate to make the appropriate decision? I, I see that standard is moving on down the road, but that's, that's for another day. And I will share this with you before we get started. My youngest child took an AP test, and she not, did not concentrate on studying for that AP test. And I knew that she hadn't, and when the results came in the mailbox at the end of June last year, she went and got it out of the mailbox and put it on the refrigerator. We were so excited because she had made a four. I thought, there's a miracle. She really hadn't made a four, she'd made a one, and she had changed the one to a four. And so when you talk about ones looking like fours and fours looking like ones, I've been a victim of that very thing happening. And so for two weeks, we told everybody in town, our child had made a four. Uh, she had made a one. So you know what? I'm, I'm, I'm opening to listening to what you have to say about Mr. Burrows and his misperception. So anyway, uh, if you can go ahead, Mr. Bryan. Excuse me, Lieutenant Bryan.
Mayor, counsel, uh, the department's stance would be that Mr. Burrows did knowingly violate the statute. He is, as in a situation with a pharmacist, he is the gatekeeper when you're dealing with serving alcohol to that individual. He had the license in his hands. He had all opportunities to sit there and inspect it. He had opportunity to converse with the undercover officer and verify that that was her. Ask a question, what is your date of birth? If you have further questions than that, if you're not thinking that's the same person on the license, ask a few other questions. What's your address? He had those opportunities. Um, it is his responsibility. The mayor then goes into what you just said about software. That software is available. What has the company done as Wildwing to implement any of that? We can say by factually, numerous businesses in Statesboro have already implemented that technology. Uh, our argument would be there is a violation of the ordinance as written, and it should move forward as such. Do you believe Mr. Burrows is a nice young man, well-educated from what we've been told? Uh, we're not disputing that. Uh, the only dispute is that he did knowingly violate state law, which is also a violation of the ordinance, actually. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bryan.
Has, has the city sent people by, before the cop by from Wildwing?
Uh, yes, we have. We've, uh, numerous times, uh, over, uh, I'd say since September, and Wildwing has been in compliance all those times. The night that Wildwing was found in violation, there were twenty other businesses that looked at that same license and were not in violation.
All the times you have checked, all, obviously, these policies are in place where they're utilized.
That, that is correct.
The track record that they have is very good.
It, it, it has.
They made either a knowing mistake or just a mistake.
There was a viol, a minor was sold to, whether the argument be knowingly or unknowingly, that's what we don't, we don't know.
That is correct. Rob, did, did she use her, did Mrs. Greenway use the ID that she was given, like, the rest of us to go up to the thing, wait mine for half an hour, three hours to get her ID? She was, the Georgia ID?
She did, and that's all we allow any UC or confidential source to use, is their Georgia-issued driver's license. If they are from another state, which we have not had that to my knowledge, we would allow that. But we're not letting, I'm not using your ID. Um, we're being above board with it. The ID is photocopied, the, uh, controlling supervisor for that operation is inspecting those IDs, and it is part of our file. It's not an altered ID.
There was some question, I know, when we were speaking, that the ID was not in good condition. Can you address that? Is that the case, not the case?
The ID, I believe, does have some bins to it, as do many licenses. Um, it is clear, if you inspect it, what the date of birth is.
I have to ask some questions, Ms. Scarborough. Let her tell you what they do as, as a corporate, uh, corporation to try to make sure that it's not.
Um, when you first hire somebody, they have to read a personnel, they have to read a personnel manual. And in the personnel manual, it points out, like, you're not allowed to sell to minors and all that. And then we do, um, the alley rally before every shift, and every shift, I stress. I actually do tell them it costs me a lot of money to come up here, and I will drive them up here with me, they make me do this again. So, um, they are all very aware now that they will be checking this ID. But before every shift, we have a shift at ten, and we go over everything over that day, the dates, birth, and everything. And then we have a shift at four, and we go over the dates of birth and everything then.
Have you ever seen Taylor Burrows turn someone down who's trying to get alcohol for it?
Yes, we turn a lot of people down. Um, if they do not have their ID on them, I just, even if they look above age, I make them go and get their ID at this point. Um, but yes, he has turned quite a few people down.
Okay, does counsel have any questions? Uh, oh, go ahead, Lieutenant Bryan, and then I'll ask counsel to have any questions of Ms. Burrows.
Just one question, um, is Mr. Burrows still, still employed by the company?
Does counsel have any questions of Ms. Burrows or Mr. Bennett at this time?
I just want to ask one question. I would want to ask you a question. I didn't want to ask Laura Forstman and the attorney. I know, uh, the attorney of Ben Party well, but I know my Laura Forstman too. But I have a question, and it just needs to be answered. Does the term include the mayor, too? You say you make a one out of four, but let me ask you, does the term include other law states, too?
And not, it's not really ignorance of the laws, ignorance of the fact, and that's, and that's the point here. He, his whole, our whole argument is he made a, he made a mistake of fact. He looked, he, he looked at it, according to, according to my client, according to Officer Bryan, there was this ID, was, oh, he had some lines and stuff in it.
But does the state in the law, does the state back, does the state in the law, ignorance of the law is no excuse? Which one of the states?
No, he's, he's admitting, we understand the law, and we're not ignorant of the law.
I'm just saying, I'm, yes.
That's, that's a good question. He, he, um, he was ignorant of a fact, and that's my whole point here. All of the other issues here, nothing else shows that there was a known violation. He doesn't, he doesn't just glance at, he doesn't wink at the person, he doesn't just nod at. I think one of the cases involved in the gate, that person never even acted. Um, you know, there was, this was the person who himself, it was, there was no question that this was the person. It's not some larger or smaller person. So, we all, we're all, we all made mistakes. Our ordinance, your, your ordinance, does not have a strict liability standard. If you make a mistake, your ID doesn't say that. If that's what you want to say, it needs to say that. But, but you got some issues there. I know, Alvin, I talked about the, the difference between 6-3 and 6-35. 6-3 is a penalty section. It says if there's a violation under 6-35, which is the thou shalt not section, then certain penalties take place. Alvin said, you got to read those together, and I understand that's the rule of the operator. But the thou shalt not paragraph says it has to be a major violation, which is never a fine. In fact, violations, under this city's support. So, you got a problem with the ordinance, you got a problem with the facts and the, and.
So, are you, are you arguing, Mr. Bennett, that the city, or the city, I guess in this case, would have to prove that somebody knowingly did it?
That's right.
So, your argument is for every person that serves underage, and we would have to have some visual, because you don't know what's in their head, so they would have to visually show you that they're knowingly doing something, because if it's in, just in their head, like a, a bad computation, or I am going to do this knowingly, um, there's no way, it's like the wind. You can't, there's no way to gauge what's in their head, so we would have to have a physical representation of knowingly. And I have a hard time going from knowingly being a mental concept to a physical representation of it. So, can you take me from the mental concept to the physical representation of knowingly?
Absolutely.
Without the wink and the nod?
Absolutely. Under, under our general criminal, or actually under murder section, the question gets to be, and that's right, evil intent, the intention to take one, how do you prove it? There were a number of ways, conversation, photographs, circumstantial evidence. In this case, you got circumstantial evidence, but you got to find a man who's turned people down before, and he made a mistake in this case. Yes, you can determine contempt by a variety of ways, not simply related, say photograph or a deed. By history, by, by the preponderance of evidence of what he's done in the past. Transactional evidence before transactional evidence, fact, there's a number of ways to prove. Very simple to say, I handed him an ID, I was underage, he got what? And I don't think that's what your statute says, and I don't think that's what your statute should say. Because I think, I think you should have to prove the 3-3-23 knowingly violated the law. And, and Ty Moser, I mean, that's reason of the preponderance of evidence on behalf, on part of the public safety.
So, I, so, so what I'm hearing you say, and I'm, and I'm really working through this, because I'm hearing what you're saying. On one side, you tell me I've got this scholarship person, this brilliant guy, who never does anything wrong. And on, so, this brilliant guy made a math calculation mistake.
Or flipped something.
Or, but didn't do it knowingly. So, we should sit here as a body and say, based on preponderance of evidence of his character.
How would you prove that?
Then you've got to go from the character of this individual being so high moral and actually very intelligent to just screw it up.
Well, including law, actually.
And making a mistake. And I, I'm good with that, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to reconcile, you know, kind of what it is you're telling me, because based on the argument you're making, there isn't a person that couldn't walk in here that can't say, I just read it wrong.
That's in that.
I mean, is that, is that correct?
That's an argument, but again, if you have other evidence, for instance, if they said, if, if Rob or Patrick did that intelligence, you go to the guy on the left, the young guy on the left, the law was for the baseball cap, he never checks, or if he does, he hasn't paid attention. They got that evidence, they sent you a third people, and they found that, then you would have evidence of similar transaction. That's one thing towards the law, for me. Towards the law, also has a section that says, someone who is of good character, that in and of itself can find out can result in a finding of not guilty. In, in murder case, you can have, if there's all the evidence is that this person has never violated the law, a good person, all like that. That is evidence in and of self sufficient to acquit someone of a crime. And that's what I'm saying here, you don't have any of that evidence. You've got, looking at the ID, the right lady, the date was wrong, it was obviously crushed, otherwise, I don't know.
Well, the date wasn't wrong, so let's be clear about that, okay? I mean, according to that, the date was not correct.
Can we even, can we even consider that, since we don't have the ID, don't have a picture of the ID?
Yes, you can consider that.
But that, but how, how do we determine what the status of that ID is? I mean, we got no.
There's a picture of it.
At least there's a picture of it.
I've never seen a picture of it.
We have a picture of the picture of that ID.
We're supposed to be finding, but we don't have a picture of it, so we keep talking about it.
Uh, Mr. Boynton, he also, he actually, Mr. Burrows, Taylor actually says, when they came back in the next day, they showed a, showed a blown up picture of the ID. And so, obviously, the whole ID's usually blown up, and then it is one about this, this big. So, that's, that's an excellent point. And, and Burrows, that ID is not shown on the media. It's not like they videoed it and volcano it, for having to presume that what they showed. And I don't have the reason to dispute it, and I notice that, I associate it.
So, do you have evidence that that same ID was presented over 20 times that night before she was settled in my cell?
Fair enough.
So, going forward, Mr. Lee Park, how do you respond and guide this body into looking at what Mr. Bennett said to say?
Well, there are two questions, and it's question fact, which is a known, an unarguable question.
You got a particular microphone, so we can hear every.
I would say, I would say there is, there is, the evidence that it was a knowing sale, there's evidence that the person was presented an ID to show their birthday, of the person being underage of 21, and that person was sold alcohol, that's evidence that a knowing sale took place. The only evidence, the evidence that there was a mistake made, whether that's even relevant evidence is another question. It's a self-serving testimony of the defendant himself. And the stuff you read at the beginning, you talk about, you can, you can consider the person's interest or want of interest in their testimony. Usually, self-serving testimony is given little to no evidence in any way. So, you have somebody who's denying, who's saying he made a mistake, and that serves his interest. So, you can judge the credibility of that statement, whether you believe it or not.
But does his testimony in this particular case, is it self-interest, considering we're not discussing his ticket? We're discussing the alcohol license.
I think he's got.
The alcohol license isn't his, in his name.
I think he has an interest in denying, engaging in some sort of criminal act. It's in his interest to deny, to say that he made a mistake. That's self-serving, serves his interest later on. He's furnished an affidavit swearing under oath this to be true. It's a self-serving affidavit. And what I'm saying is, is that kind of evidence is generally given very little weight. What you do have is evidence that this person was presented an ID by the person and that showed the person to be underage. So, there is a dispute of fact, and, and you, it's you who determines that fact. Also, the Georgia law requires that the person verify the age. So, there's an argument to be made, and what this kind of circles around, what this is circling around, is when somebody comes in and says, I made a mistake, does that get them off the hook entirely? One argument you could consider is, by making a mistake or not, they failed to verify the age of the person. And the state, the state law requires them to check an ID and verify the person's age. There's an argument that he didn't do that. He failed to verify the age because the person was underage, and the ID that he was given showed that. So, that evidence shows a failure to verify the age. So, there is, that's the argument there.
I've got a question. And that's the argument, so all the grave on it, you know, that, 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 that doesn't, that's not the argument, is it?
What's that, Council?
The argument of the grave and the character, that's not the argument. The, the argument is he made a mistake. That's what that was for.
I believe what, what Mr. Bennett is saying is if you come in and you make, you make an honest mistake, it's sold to a 16-year-old, you're not liable for that. You can come in and say that with your own self-serving testimony. And say, I made an honest mistake and furnished alcohol to a minor, you can't convict me. And there's no, but there is evidence that it was knowing, because he was presenting an ID that told him the age of the person. He's simply denying he knew that, and that denial is self-serving. And you can give whatever weight, if any, you want to to that denial.
Yeah, I think off Mr. Boynton's point was well taken, that is, it's not a self-serving affidavit. He's not on trial here, his criminal case comes up a couple of months from now. And I think, uh, Mr. Lewis's point is, that he raised, is character does count. It is evidence, it is evidence that Georgia law considers, and, and is sufficient under Georgia law to exonerate somebody. And that's, that's important here. I mean, you've got a guy who has admittedly turned down people in the past. You've got a guy who's obviously more careful, more, um, probably got better recollection than any of us combined here does. And I think that's important, because I think he's trying to, I think we can take that into account. I think Mr. Lewis's point is well taken. His character does count, it's not something you can just flippantly disregard. And I think it is, in fact, not a self-serving statement, because if he's not here, he's not going to lose a license. So, I think both of those points are well taken.
I'm a little concerned about the self-serving part, because if he had, if he had not given that affidavit, would he still be employed?
If he had not given that statement, would he still be, would he still be employed or not?
If he had said he had knowingly done that, would he still be employed?
No.
Thank you. Tell me why that was self-serving. I'm not arguing one or the other, but I don't think he would say it's the reason.
I mean, the, the issue of law that, that Mr. Bennett raises, that, that is interesting, and I think it's, you see that section 6-35, and, uh, again, I think Mr. Bennett's pointing out the inconsistencies in our ordinance that do need to be addressed, but the rule of law in, in, in constructing statutes and ordinances is you should read, they are presumed to be constitutional and meet, meet due process requirements. And Georgia law has not only a constitutional due process standard, that all of our ordinances must meet, but there's a statutory due process requirement in the, in Title III that requires us to have ascertainable standards. And what Mr. Bennett is arguing is section 6-35 says that only for major violations can any suspension or revocation take place, and nowhere in the ordinance is major defined. And if that was the only part of our ordinance, I think his, his argument may carry the day. But I, I think if a court was to read Chapter 6 in its entirety, and the courts are required to read them to save them from being unconstitutional, if you can read, if you could read a law two ways, one that would be declared unconstitutional, one to be held unconstitutional, the court would require to give deference to the legislative body to read it in a way that would save it constitutionally. So, when you go back to section 6, 6-3 in the violations of penalty section, it talks about any violation. It doesn't use the undefined major. It says any violation of this ordinance may result in a revocation or suspension of a license. So, I think if, what we want to say is we're traveling under section 6-3 rather than 6-35. And there is some inconsistency that does need to be cleared up. If you, if, if you accept Mr. Bennett's argument, the section 6-35 controls, and major is so ill-defined that the statute fails to meet its constitutional due process standards, there would be no administrative act, we couldn't take any action against any licensee for any value, for any license violation, any type of statute would fail on constitutional grounds. So, I think you have to read the ordinance, taking 6-35 and 6-3 together. And when you do that, I think there's, uh, there are ascertainable standards, because in 6-3, there's any violation.
And my only, my only response to that is Georgia law has many sections where it defines the violation first, and at the tail end, it will tell you what the penalty is. Theft, the section of Georgia law talks about, you know, theft of automobiles, theft by taking, theft by receiving, all of those things, goes all the way through, and defines the elements that have to be present in order for that crime to be present, and then at the tail end, it goes, if you violated these things, this is how it falls out, first violation, second violation, which is what 6-3 does here. It says if you find 6-35, make your violation, then you apply the penalty section. And, uh, so I disagree with this, Mr. Lee Park's answer.
Okay, do we have any other questions from Council, for either Mr. Bennett or Mr. Lee Park?
You don't have the state law in front of you, do you?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. Could you clarify section 3-3-OCGA, 3-3-23 subsection H?
H?
Yes.
H says, and that's, that's what I'm referring to about verification. H says, in any case where a reasonable recruited person could reasonably be endowed as to whether or not a person to whom the alcoholic beverage is to be sold or otherwise furnished is actually 21 years of age or older, it shall be the duty of the person selling or otherwise furnishing such alcoholic beverage to request to see and to be furnished with proper identification as provided subsection D, in order to verify the age of such person. And the failure to make such a request and verification in any case where the person to whom the alcoholic beverage is sold or otherwise furnished is less than 21 years of age may be considered by the trier of fact in determining whether the person selling or otherwise furnishing such alcoholic beverage did so knowingly.
So, you phrased it up in easy speak.
Well, I think that's where, me, me and Mr. Bennett probably disagree over this, this, this part of the state ordinance, I mean. And I would argue if you, if you're presented an ID that has an age on it, it tells you the person, there's a document in your hand that tells you the person is under 21 years of age, there's evidence that you know that person's underage. If you then furnish the person the alcoholic beverage, you either knowingly did it because you knew what was on the card, and you knew they were underage, right?
Right.
Or you failed to verify the age, which would be a violation of subsection H. Mr. Bennett wants to believe, I don't want to put too many words in his mouth, I'm sure you're correct, and Mr. Bennett, I think, wants to argue that if you make a mistake, it's not a failure to verify. And, and I think that, that's where the debate's going to be. And our position would be, if, if you sell the, if you're given an ID, or my position would be, if you're given an ID that has the person's age on it, that tells you they're under 21, and you don't verify the age and give them the alcohol, you failed to verify. So, you're, you're getting into a real linguistic dispute the lawyers are very fond of.
What's the definition of is?
Is.
Would you like to respond, Mr. Bennett?
Uh, and I think that's the nature of, I think that's the question that Mr. Lewis was asking. I think that's important.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anything else, Mr. Bennett, you'd like to say before I ask for? Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Leeport?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then in that case, do I have a motion from counsel finding that Wild Wings violated the City of State's for alcohol ordinance on December third, two thousand, excuse me, on January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen? Let me repeat that. Do I have a motion from counsel finding that Wild Wings violated the City of State's for alcohol ordinance on Jan- January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen?
I make a motion, I think he.
Do I have, excuse me, Mr. Brian, Lieutenant Brian, and another one?
Is the, is the date on December forty-fourteenth?
Okay, let, let me go back then. When was the date because it's not the same date that's on?
Twenty nineteen.
Nineteenth, okay. Do I have a motion that Wild Wings violated the City of State's for alcohol ordinance on December nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen?
I make a motion, I think he is valid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this point, as this is a first violation, counsel may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from counsel as regards punishment for the violation?
Now, I make a motion to be true, same as others, by the first offense, be a warning, please, ma'am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A warning is issued, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item eight, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh eight. Waiver of any payment related taxes by the State for Housing Authority, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, evidently this, it comes to your attention maybe every year and, and your question for this waiver, I think it'd just be easiest if I read the resolution real quickly because it goes into pretty good detail. And then I've got Bobby Joe Casey in here that can give us some information on why they're asking about the request. Says that whereas the City of State for has previously established the State's for Housing Authority to provide and subsidize rental housing to low and moderate income citizens, whereas the State's for Housing Authority is exempt from property taxes, but is required to make a payment in lieu of taxes, which acronym would be PILOT, based upon the amount of rental income during the fiscal year. And in previous years, the mayor, city council have annually waived the requirement to make this payment in lieu of taxes in order for the housing authority to utilize that money on capital improvements and/or maintenance on its facilities. And whereas the State's for Housing Authority has asked that the payment in lieu of taxes be waived again for the twenty-fourteen tax year with nineteen thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents to be used for maintenance on the facilities. The State's for Housing Authority has provided evidence that prior pilot funds that were waived have been used for maintenance on the facilities. And finally, the State's for Housing Authority and the City of State for enjoying excellent work relationship. As Mr. Casey in here, I thought maybe you could tell a little bit of what recent projects have been done and what, what planning you last summer money for before you consider this resolution.
Um, we use this money to do repairs and all. Um, I've been there eighteen years. Departments are up far. Last year, I have inspection out of a possible hundred from a HUD inspector. We, we agreed to ninety-three. And HUD has cut our money. First couple of years I was there, we got around three hundred thousand. Now we down to around a hundred fifty to use that money to do repairs. Since I've been there, all the bathrooms, all the kitchens have been repaired. Security screens have been put in. Windows, windows double insulated have been placed in, in security screen doors. And we just try to keep the outside looking right when nobody knows what the heavy trash, you know? But we, we use this money to put back in departments.
And what, what was, you told me earlier that you had some plans for some upcoming?
We got some roofs we're going to start replacing. I replaced roofs when I first came there and they're beginning to deteriorate and we're gonna have to start replacing some more roofs.
Okay. Really all, I think I had it for that.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Casey?
Thank you for you, dude.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary, remember you gave a, excellent list of all the, all the things about them. They are amazing. Thanks for you, dude.
Yeah, I think I left the list off this year, I forgot.
That's all right. I'm sorry, I missed the last year's.
I think you passed, I mean, at the time, you bought everything that you wanted over there. Plus, you left all four hundred and twelve ago. You got your condition right now, too.
Right.
Thank you for, you do that for real nice.
The first year I came, we had forty-five move outs. Three years later, we were having like eighteen. We put in new heat and air systems in Butler and Comer Homes, which it never had. So, they were a little more satisfied.
Yes, again, we say thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh eight?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, item nine, consideration of a motion to abort a contract for a police records management software system to be funded from SPOSS two thousand seven thirteen to Sun Guard Public Sector in the amount not exceeding four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Mr. Baker?
Yes, ma'am. You state, as you stated, this is for a police records management software system. Uh, we're recommending that, uh, we piggyback basically per our ordinance, uh, a current contract that Gainesville Florida has with the same system. Uh, this RFP process that they went through would be the same process that we would go through if, uh, if we were running typically where we do things. Uh, I will add, PD's had several months of research and presentations. Uh, they've, they've done extensive research with the entities, not just Gainesville, but several others in the state that had this system. We're very pleased we, we've gotten, uh, good feedback from it. Uh, the RFP takes into consideration, and we do have a copy of that, you know, cost, experience, seven or eight different factors that they used as we do in our.